We're going to go ahead and get started, so I'm going to call this City Council Workshop to Order for Tuesday, May 15, 2018. Let the record show the entire council is present with the exception of Mr. Menke. Items for discussion is DS 18-037, Discuss Agenda Items for the Regular City Council Meeting of May 22, 2018. First thing on the app is our minutes, MN 18-010, Consider Minutes of Regular City Council Meeting of May 8, 2018, last week. Any questions or comments on those? Seeing none, moving on to Resolutions, RS 18-036, Consider Memorandum Resolution Authorizing a Contract for the Application of Payment Reclamate? Reclamate, how you say that?
Reclamite.
Reclamite. Reclamite, rejuvenate agent on identified city roadways with pavement restoration, Inc. Mr. Olson, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you mentioned, this is an item for a contract with Pavement Restoration, Incorporated. Quote was obtained for a sole-source product called Reclamite that's produced by PVI. This is an asphalt rejuvenator, and Street Operations has been reviewing different options for different pavement treatments that would allow our maintenance dollars to take us further and treat more roadways on a tighter budget. Reclamite has been shown to preserve asphalt pavement using a rejuvenator, and that extends the life of that pavement at a decreased maintenance cost. It also improves the durability of the asphalt and the ability to delay the aging process of newly constructed roadways, as well as reverse the aging process for those that already exist. The city expenditures projected at $204,488.27 for fiscal year 18, and expenditures are based on current project needs and estimated quantities on those roadways. Funds are available in our street maintenance count in Street Operations. What you see here is an abbreviated list of roadways. Your packet actually details the limits to and from the cross streets on each of these roadways, but that's very difficult to fit on one PowerPoint slide. So what you see here is a list of roadways that will receive treatment as part of this program. And this next slide here, what you'll see on the left-hand side is a roadway that was a before picture of a treatment. You'll notice that there's a larger void. You see a much more porous asphalt. And on the right-hand side, that is after the treatment. You see a much tighter fit. There's not too much of a void there. It's a much smoother surface, and it allows for less water to infiltrate through that pavement. The city considered multiple alternatives. One was to select a different type of surface treatment, such as a slurry seal or micro-surfacing, as we've done in the past. We noted that this treatment was a little more expensive, so we could not treat near the quantity of roadway with that type of treatment. The next option is to select an application to different roadways within the city. We field calls throughout the year. We take complaints from citizens. We listen to council feedback that we get, and we observe those through city staff windshield surveys, you call it. We look at the roadways ourselves and determine that the streets that we have here are best bang for our buck. Therefore, city staff is recommending that City Council award a contract to Pavement Restoration, Incorporated, for the application of Reclamite Asphalt Rejuvenating Agent, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Mr. Kilpatrick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What, going back to, we're talking about improved durability asphalt, I understand that, but now, what, how does this add to the life expectancy of that road from what we're doing now to when we have to redo this again?
Okay, so this is a chemical treatment to the surface that, when it's applied, you'll see the road will be sanded, and then on top of that sand, this chemical will be applied. It activates the petroleum products that are in the asphalt that have started to degrade over time, and when we say activates, it opens those back up so that they can bind with that material that's placed on the roadway, and it allows it to fuse back together and close the pores that have opened in that roadway over time.
So how long would this?
It adds five to seven years' life to a roadway.
Five to seven?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. That's what I was looking.
Ms. Nash King.
We go through a process of, first off, we field phone calls pretty well year-round with citizen input that indicates where they feel that we have roadway issues. We also then have a windshield survey and a work plan that's developed by our Street Operations staff on an annual basis, and that is based on their professional opinions as individuals. We have several that have been in the business for 30-plus years, and based on a combination of citizen input and staff opinion at that time, then we develop this list of roadways we feel will give us the best bang for our buck.
All right. Anybody else? All right. Thank you. Next is RS 18-037, Consider Memorandum Resolution to amend the financial governance policies and approve the program. Approve the program citizens may contribute to through their city utility bill. Mr. Locke, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. The city has accepted contributions through the monthly utility bills for the Senior Citizen Utility Bill Assistance Program since 2003. This item proposes to add two additional programs to the monthly utility bill that citizens can contribute to, as well as amend the financial governance policies that City Council recently adopted. The first item that we'll discuss is the amendment of the financial governance policies. Section 8 revenues under subsection C of supplementary funding, the staff is proposing adding contributions, and it's the underlined and bolded two words, so that it'll read that "The City of Colleen will maximize its financial resources by obtaining supplementary funding through contributions and agreements with other public and private agencies for the provision of public services or the construction of capital improvements." And this just incorporates contributions into the financial governance policies. We just talked about the, or I just mentioned that the Senior Citizens Utility Bill Assistance Program has been a program citizens could contribute to since 2003. The purpose of this program is to provide financial assistance for senior citizens on their utility bills. In terms of the application and eligibility process, the applications are submitted to the Director of Finance. Eligible senior citizens must be at least 60 years of age, and the applicant may remain on the program for six months. After sitting off for six months, the applicant may reapply and be on the program for another six-month term. The public purpose served is to reduce the impact on the community resources by providing assistance to senior citizens who aren't able to pay their utility bills. The first of the two programs that are being proposed to be added to the utility bill is the Summer Youth Program. The purpose of the Summer Youth Program is to provide financial assistance for children that are unable to attend city-fee-based summer programs. For application and eligibility, applications will be submitted to the Director of Community Services, and they will be accepted from February 1st through April 15th. Eligible families must be at or below 80% of the area's median household income, and just as an example, an annual household income with a four-person household must be at or below $47,750. Children must live in the City of Colleen and be between the ages of four and 16, and each child may receive a credit of up to $100 towards the cost of a summer program with a 200 maximum per family. The public purpose served is to reduce the impact on community resources by providing services to children who are unable to attend city-fee-based summer programs. The second program that is being proposed to be added is the Animal Services Unit. The purpose of this program is to provide additional resources for animals and the care of Animal Services Unit. The Chief of Police will manage the contributions that are received, and the funds will be used primarily to provide spay and neuter services. Funds may be reallocated by the city manager or designated for another purpose. The public purpose served is to reduce the impact on community resources by providing services for animals and the care of the Animal Services Unit. This slide just shows an example of what the utility bill will look like. In the upper right-hand corner is where a citizen can list how much money they would like to contribute and check which program, and if they would like to contribute to multiple programs, they have that option. So staff recommends that City Council approve the amendment to the financial governance policies and the addition of the Summer Youth Program and Animal Services Unit to the programs that citizens may contribute to through their utility bill. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mrs. Nash King. Make sure you speak into the mic. We're being recorded here, so. It's not on.
When the funds come in, do you have a certain account that it will go?
Yes, when the citizen contributes funds to one of these programs, the city has designated accounts that it goes into to ensure that the contributions are tracked and are used for the intended purpose. Yes, ma'am.
Anybody else? When you, the part there where it says the city manager can use it for other things within the animal shelter or for, it's within the animal shelter, just want to clarify that.
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Locke. Moving on to public hearings, PH 18-009, Hold a Public Hearing and Consider an Ordnance Requested by Gary W. Perser, Jr. On behalf of RSPP Developers in Case Number Z18-06, to rezonate Lot 1, Block 10, Lot 1, Block 11, and Lot 2, Block 13 Bunny Trail Estates, Phase 1, and lots 3 through 19, Block 10, lots 24 through 34, Block 11, and lots 3 through 18, Block 13 Bunny Trail Estates, Phase 2, from planned unit development, a PUD with an R1 Single Family Residential District uses, to a planned unit development, PUD with R1 Single Family Residential District uses, to decrease the required side yard setback from nine feet to seven feet, and increase the required rear yard setbacks from 17 feet to 25 feet. The properties are addressed at 3704 Jack Barnes Avenue, 3207 Brunswick Drive, 3704, 3705, 3706, 3707, 3708, 910, 3711 Brunswick Drive, 3800, 3801, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 3900 Brunswick Drive, 3901, 3, 5, 7, 9, 11, and 4001 Brunswick Drive, 3703, 5, 7, 9, 11, 3801, 3803, 5, 7, 9, 11, 3901, 3903, 3905, 3907, 3909, 11 Anvil Range Road in Colleen, Texas. Mr. McAwayne, welcome.
Thank you. Saved me a lot of talking regarding those addresses. Council, what you have is property that, once upon a time, was zone standard R1, and a few years ago, the developer was working with a builder who wanted to put a bonus room to the back of the house. It basically functioned as a fourth or fifth bedroom, and in doing that, the property they bought to market didn't require as much, required a less rear yard, and in exchange for that, we required more side yard, along with masonry standards and fully sodded yards. That builder has moved out of the project, and the developer now is looking to simply revert the side and rear yards back to your standard R1 housing, but the masonry standards and landscaping standards will remain in place. It's approximately, well, it's actually 47 lots, and we went through the effort of calling out each lot by its respective address, because we notified everybody around the extents of the subdivision, because oftentimes it's confusing if people think that you're rezoning their property. So we specifically called out those undeveloped lots that are still under the ownership of the developer. As stated on the PowerPoint slide, we're simply taking side yards from nine feet back down to the standard seven feet that we see in a single-family residential neighborhood, and we're increasing the rear yard from 17 feet back to 25, which is standard for an R1 house. The properties in question is that lot there, and essentially, all of them run a lots along this side of Brunswick, those lots along the south, right away of Brunswick, and then we drop down to those lots along the north, right away of Anvil Road. We linked the lots through the right-of-way, and in doing that, we were able to notify a greater area of citizens, and the purpose in doing that is to make sure that everybody would have an opportunity to respond and know what was going on with this rezonate case. 166 individuals were notified following, or at the time of the P&amp;Z meeting, we received one response of opposition. No reason was stated for the opposition. The Commission's recommendation is for approval, this is a vote of 5 to 0 with Commissioner Perser abstaining from the vote. Again, what you look at is essentially no change to the PUD, other than the decreased side yard requirements and the increased rear yard requirements. Everything else remains the same. Three sides, masonry on the front and side exteriors. This keeps the integrity of the neighborhood together in terms of appearance standards and the fully sodded lot requirement. And I'd like to answer any questions you have about this PUD case. It's pretty basic and standard, and I entertain any questions that you may have.
Questions? Mrs. Nash King.
Well, he simply developed the complement of lots that they wanted to develop, and so now the interest is in getting more homebuilding interest and taking the side yards back to your standard R1, maybe appealing to some builders. And in all actuality, it may be a situation that between now and this being on the agenda next Tuesday, maybe this item may or may not be on the agenda if they find a builder, but the big thing for the planning staff was making sure the masonry and yard requirements were the same so that another builder would meet and come up in standards in terms of the market housing they were putting in.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? All right. Next is PH 18-010, Hold a Public Hearing and Consider an Ordnance Requested by Widisland Investment LTD. Case number Z18-07, to rezonate Lot 1B, Block 2, Bridgewood Edition, Phase 3, replat from B3 Local Business District to B5 Business District to allow for automobile service. The property is located at 4300 West Stansluder Loop, FM 3470 in Colleen, Texas. Mr. McAwayne.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this property is an undeveloped lot. There's interest from a buyer to purchase the property and to essentially put automobile service as a lubricant shop that they're looking at doing. Upon its initial submission to the city staff, the applicant requested B5 zoning. We took a look at the future land use map. The parcel is designated for general commercial use, and that makes the request consistent with the future land use map. The property here is a property in question. You can see it, but say, single-family R1 zone neighborhood to the south, and it has commercial frontage along Stansluder Loop along both sides. We notified 21 surrounding property owners and received no responses. The recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission is for B4 Business District zoning. This is by a vote of 6 to 0. The staff recommended a more restrictive zoning district to the commission, simply because most of the automobile-related uses aren't a B4. We don't expect every applicant to know that, but that zoning would be sufficient to accommodate their needs. This slide shows you some of the uses we have listed. Auto sales, new and used with showrooms for new cars, auto upholstery and muffler shops, and auto repair shops, so that falls squarely within the range of what he is interested in doing. The applicant expressed no issue with the B4 zoning request, so next Tuesday, if you're so inclined to approve it, rather, there's no issue with the B4 as opposed to the B5 request. Of course, we bring it to you as initially submitted for B5, but that is a recommendation for B4, and I answer any questions that you have.
Questions? Mr. Kilpatrick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for knowledge to the council, because this is, to the south, is abutting against R1 homes.
Yes.
What type of screening is going to be required so that it's not an obvious salvage operation or whatever from there?
Currently, our code requires before the use of any commercial property, you have to put in a screening device. Typically, what you're looking at is a fence, essentially, to be erected along the south side of the property. It is not required for them to screen along the east and west sides, because those are also commercially zoned tracks. So regardless of whether or not a property owner, a residential property owner has a fence or not, our code will always require a commercial developer or business owner to erect a fence, to do exactly as you're alluding to, to provide a buffer via a screen to lessen the visual impact against the residential homeowners.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Anybody else? All right. Next item, PH 18-011, Hold a Public Hearing and Consider an Ordnance Requested by Key NC Association, Flume Number Z18-08, to amend the comprehensive plans, future land use map, the flume from suburban commercial to a planned development designated area for approximately 50.5 acres out of the Robert Cunningham Survey Abstract, Number 15, and part of Lot 2, Block 1, Rosewood Edition. The subject property is generally located approximately 300 feet south of Central Texas Expressway, along east and west side of Rosewood Drive, Colleen, Texas. Mr. McAwayne.
Council, this is approximately 103 acres of land, with 50 and 1/2 acres of it along the west right-of-way of Rosewood Drive. It's commercially zoned but unplatted. The remainder portion of the acreage sits south and adjacent to the Rosewood Nursing Facility. It's all under ownership by one family, but currently, there is interest among several developers in working jointly to bring to market a mixed-use development, and after meeting with staff, it was our recommendation to them to change the future land use map to facilitate greater flexibility outside of what is normally allowed for a simple commercial zoning in a suburban commercial context. As the mayor mentioned, currently, the designation is suburban commercial, and that context only allows you essentially commercial retail and service uses, but basically at a, in a character context that is more restrictive than what you would get in essentially the zoning associated with B4 and B5. The purpose for the planned development in our preliminary discussions with the various parties is to allow a mixture of attached and detached, single-family housing types, multifamily, open space, and for the staff's perspective, we're looking at greater controls with regard to allowable uses in the commercial portions of the project, as well as a higher standard in terms of appearance and landscaping. The intent, Council, is for us to negotiate this area as opposed to allow it to develop strictly based on market potential. It does, in our opinion, amount to a gateway project, and in our conversations with all of the developers that are associated with the project, we feel that we've reached a good consensus in terms of having them come with a series of planned developments which will allow a negotiated process with the Planning and Zoning Commission and also you That's currently the designation of the property. It's simply a color change, but it's significant in the fact that it allows you that flexibility going forward. The future land use map amendment, we think, will allow them to maximize the market. We have reservations about the city's ability to effectively recruit 103 acres of commercial enterprises. As a matter of fact, I believe market heights in its entirety is less than 103 acres, and it's unlikely that you would get that much density so close to another project. So with other projects like mine, such as La Ca Scata, that haven't come to fruition, we're looking at this as an opportunity to, once again, reengage interested parties and bring it to Colleen, something that we think is going to be attractive. We think that due to feasibility issues, plant development is the way to go, and our conversations with the commissioners, they were also in agreement that they think this allows flexibility. I would just remind you all, this is not a zoning case. Depending on your actions next Tuesday, if it is approved, what you can expect to have is a series of smaller plant developments, all of which will be negotiated under Dr. Shinnaw's guidance. There will be three or four different developers, all of whom that we've met with, we've already told them our wishes for the property. They seem to be amenable to design guidelines, more restrictive commercial uses, a comprehensive landscape package, community amenities, and a great deal of open space. So we think it has the potential to be very attractive. It will not come in all at once, and we think if it's approved, we'll have a series of different developers bringing in their proportionate share of the project, all of which will come for you, come before you for discussion. So I'd like to answer any questions that you have and see if you have any concerns about anything.
Mrs. Nash King. Microphone. Is it working?
It works, sir. It does work. Sir, are you saying it'll be like the market heights, and would it be like an environment for all family members, like shopping malls, a place to eat, from that perspective?
Well, I don't know if it will capture as much of a commercial component as market heights. What I will tell you is that we do expect a mixed-use character. I think that it's somewhat fluid, Ms. Nash King, in terms of what the various commercial interests may do. The market is very hard to gauge, and so that's part of some of the hesitancy in my answer to your question beyond just what I know. But I will tell you that despite some concerns on behalf of the developers, they were still very amenable to sitting down at the table with us, and that's a good thing. Whenever we can get those many different developers, some of whom are not local, at the table, and to basically get to buy into what we think is a common vision, we would hope that a variety of retail uses are there, and that with Rosewood operating the way it is, with such a close proximity to I-14, we can capture some of those things that are attractive to commercial developers and open up more commercial frontage, because everybody can't get along I-14. So we have to bring it south a little bit and see if we can get some value out of that property that lies along either side of Rosewood.
The landscaping would be a concern. You said that's the gateway to continue that. That would be nice.
Right. We're discussing everything from hiking back bike paths to some ability to tie into some efforts that the city has underway. So it's still very much a painting in process, but as you well might imagine, they feel more comfortable knowing that the land use designation has changed before they start coming with very concrete design elements, which, of course, will come before you.
Thank you.
Mr. Harris.
Let's ask some quick questions. When was it, when was it zoned suburban?
Mr. Harris, I believe that designation has probably been in place there since the future land use map was first produced in 2010.
2010, okay. And, let's see, because of course, you know, I'm... And let's see, because of course, you know, I'm a, I guess, one of the council members who, you know, tries to go by the future land use map and try to change it all the time. But let's see, so you said it was 103 acres of land and the developers requesting 50.5, I guess, yeah, 50.5 acres of it. In regards to, because if it's been in suburban commercial since 2010, I guess my question now is, when you spoke in regards of a concern of being able to bring in enough commercial businesses or businesses in general to fill up 103 acres, I guess I have to ask the question, how much effort has been put into it? I mean, have people just, have we just kind of left it there and hoped people would come? Or have we been trying to really go out and interest people in that area? Because even with the Rosewood development now, it appears that you have a better chance because you have the, you have a large community surrounding it and so forth, and it would be a prime, prime pace place for, you know, some suburban commercial-type places. So have we been actively, I guess in the past eight years, seven to eight years, going out and trying to recruit businesses to come to that particular area?
Sure. Well, that's not our function in planning, you know, just as a point of clarification. This is all private property. It's owned by the Cross family.
Right.
So we as staff don't basically step outside of our roles to cheerlead for you to come and use somebody's property. We leave that up for them to, once they feel comfortable, engage those individuals that are brokers and realtors and the like, to get interest on their property. Now, where we come in is when we are contacted. We make them aware of any kind of economic and development incentives that may be in place. But if they come to us with a proposal that does not mesh with what we have currently on the books, every property owner that can come before you and request a future land use map amendment or a zoning change, that's just basically a right that's afforded to everyone. So we don't actively go out with private property and do that. Now, the chamber will do that with EDC property that's owned, but for private property, that's the role of the individual property owners. I can tell you that over the years, the Cross family has been very diligent and patient to make sure that Rosewood was constructed and to the extent possible, negotiate for drive openings onto Rosewood. But the market has been up and down with commercial interests, and I think they now feel comfortable with the people at the table to come forward now with this process. As far as the city's exposure, we have none. It's already commercially zoned. So it's a question of what is more feasible, because we know the frontage is going to be occupied first. Once that happens, what happens with the back half of the property along for the road? And that's when it gets to be difficult at that point to get commercial interest that deep off of a property.
Okay. So, but you said, so I guess I should have been, I guess I could ask a question to either chamber members or KEDC as far as how active they've been at trying to assist if the resident had a zoned suburban commercial, and it seems like they would have been in agreement to help assist in some kind of way. It seems that way, but.
That's, if I can just mention that, because that's a real estate thing, it has nothing to do with that. They did have signs up there for sale, they developed that, they flattened it out, it used to be a hill. And as a real estate guy, you know, if you get somebody that wants to buy it and pay you prime price, by all means. And I could tell you, they market a lot. There's for sale signs there, they've been there for a long time, right there in the corner and everything. So that's just a real estate responsibility, not a KEDC or city.
I mean, you're saying it working, you know, if the residents went to them and asked them for help and so forth.
Websites.
Like you said, yeah. So, but, yeah, but.
Well, I can answer that question for me. I myself contacted the chamber, and they were more than willing to entertain a conversation with regarding incentives. Now, when I approached the development interest, they weren't interested in that. I think they have a very discreet vision. I don't think they need participation from the city to facilitate that, other than your approval of anything they bring forward. So I will tell you, the chamber, Ms. Phyllis Gilgry was more than interested, and we are trying to proceed at the pace that all these varied interests are able to come to bear. It's not easy, because everybody has an agenda with regard to a project this size, but we are willing to round them up and get them here before you.
And that's, it's a great location. I mean, you got highway access, and I know that location real well, because that's where I run, but it's got beautiful sidewalks there, access, you know, to the park, you know, Perser Park down the road. So, I mean, it'd be a great, it's marketable piece of property, and yet, you know, it hasn't sold yet. So, Mr. Rivera?
Oh, no, Mr. Mayor, what I was going to say is that anyone who wants to buy a piece of land there, they're welcome to, because that's, like you said, it is private property, real estate. But I may say that since 2010, and when we started dealing with the Land Use Committee, the chairman did went to quite a few places, including Sugar Land, because I was there with them. So they have done quite a bit, also tried to bring in business. Every time they think about business, they think about Chairman of Congress, they don't think about how property and what they've done in the past. The chairman has been very, very active since the Land Use Committee, and I know that for a fact, because I've been there with them.
If I just may bring something up, and this may not have to, this may have to do with the plotting or something like that, but one of the things on Rosewood and on Stagecoach there is the traffic. And so when it comes to that point, because I know like Deerwood, when they develop that area, you only have one access, and as more and more houses are built down there, you know, you're going to have that traffic. So hopefully, when it comes down, that's one of the things you'll consider, you know, the way that traffic's going to be flowing out there.
It is.
Not just one way to get out.
We are, we've received, our office has received feedback from Chief Kimball and Mr. Olson regarding their wishes with impact analyses and mitigating any effects of traffic accidents. So we've passed those on to the engineer. We feel comfortable in his abilities and certainly confident in our abilities to, to the extent possible, mitigate those. We do have some drive openings that were part of the Rosewood negotiations when the family gave us the right-of-way, the land for the right-of-way. And we will make it work if it's approved. We've got any number of engineering techniques that will make it work.
Okay. Mrs. Fleming?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tony, has Chief Kimball or anyone given you the number of accidents out there on Rosewood? If this development does happen, it's going to be a lot of traffic.
Yes.
Out there. So at the present time, do you know how many accidents I would ever carry out there on Rosewood?
I do not have.
Traffic out there.
I do not have accident data. I will certainly have no problem getting with Chief Kimball.
Okay.
To provide that to Mr. Olson.
You know, if this development does happen, it's going to be a lot more traffic.
Yes.
Out there, and it's going to be a lot more accidents as well. That's not a good thing to do. You know what I'm saying?
I do.
We have to kind of look at that, too.
I do. And we'll give you, without stepping out of bounds from the land use discussion.
Yes.
What I will say, Ms. Fleming, is that you will see more detail than you have with a typical zoning case when they come forward, because everyone will be accompanied by a site plan. And I feel comfortable that the city staff will, in their respective areas, give good feedback to the planning staff. And I also feel comfortable that the development interests will comply with what we would like to see them do.
Mr. Kilpatrick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You segued into my comments very. The way I understand it is this is a change in the flume, but it's already zoned business in nature.
Correct.
So they don't have to come back to us necessarily in zoning cases, as long as it complies with what the current business zonings are.
If the interest is business only, we are still interested in having them come back because we've told them there are certain uses that we do not want to see, and they have committed that they will work with us to make sure those uses are not there.
That's.
So I expect the entirety of the property to be rezoned. In the slim possibility that it's not, then we will simply have the commercial zoning, which of course is something we want to promote for the area anyway.
But all for the project, love the project. But I still voice my concern, which I've done for the last three years, and I'll still do it for the next year. It comes down to plating, and we don't see that. So we have, it's my feeling, this council person. We, I didn't get enough updates, I felt, on La Cascada as it went along, because it was in a development, I understand all that business and everything. But as this starts to go with multiple developers coming together, I would like to see us have greater workshops, not necessarily for business meetings, but greater visibility of what's being planned.
Updates.
Updates.
We, you will get a.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Concept plan for every aspect of this development, which will give you more detail than a plot, which is why we ask for the plant development. So you're going to see far more detail than you would have with just a subdivision plot, which is simply a lot. We'll give you a full concept plan, and you will get to examine those things that the staff has looked at, and we'll take it at your pace, the council's pace.
Mrs. Fleming? Go ahead.
I just wanted to add something.
Yes, ma'am.
About what I was saying. Has anyone ever done a survey, if the development does come in, how much traffic will be going to and from that commercial development?
That's a good question. We at the staff level, once we get a handle of what is anticipated, there's a guideline, it's a book that's published, Ms. Fleming, and it has basically estimates of expected traffic. And whenever we get a proposal, we're able to look at what is the land use classification, and then we provide to you in the course of a zoning report, peak traffic conditions, AM and PM peak traffic, total traffic counts. We can get very detailed, but it's, you start losing because it's so very detailed. We try to keep it where it's something that's digestible for you. Mr. Olson has communicated to us, Mr. Olson, Executive Director of Public Works, has communicated to us that he thinks that a traffic impact analysis is in order. I've passed that along to the engineer for the project. We are concerned about making sure that any traffic that is induced is accommodated by the developer and not at the city's expense, if that makes sense.
Mr. Harris.
Just one more question, even as you said that the traffic study is going to be done. Should we, should we then, based on the fact that one's going to be done, should we wait till then to say yes or no? Or what do you?
Wait till when the zoning case comes in or this item here?
Wait until the traffic analysis is done.
I would say no, only in a sense that if it breaks apart into the four, three or four disparate interests, they are going to be treated differently, because the impact will be different based on what they're proposing. What I would recommend is that as we bring it to you in pieces, you know, what you have now is the recipe. We're going to actually bake it and bring you pieces of it. When you get your respective piece, we'll accompany that with all the information you've requested, a site plan, traffic impact data. We'll get data that the airport is wanting, and you'll have all of that in your packet, and we can discuss it, because from what I gather, each project is going to be somewhat different. There'll be some components that are simply residential, some components that are holistically commercial, and then there's going to be a large component that will include both types of uses, and they're going to be treated differently under traffic impact analysis methodology. So you're going to get that anyway if we feel that a discussion is in order in terms of additional right-of-way or disciplining things of that nature that will come when they bring in their PUD plan.
I guess, I guess I'll say my concern is that we talked about it before, and it was made, how, you know, things could be made in smaller portions, which will, of course, as far as the traffic analysis, produce less traffic for that particular portion, and then another portion can be made, and the traffic will be, the analysis will be based on that particular portion, and a smaller, another small portion and so forth. So I want to try to avoid small portions being made to get around the need for extra right-of-ways and so forth, because when it comes down to it, of course, then the last person who, I guess, who has to build something is going to be responsible for, you know, providing those right-of-ways and, you know, digging ditches and trenches and all that other stuff to direct water and so forth. But I just want to make sure that nothing like that is overstepped, or there's no kind of loophole in that.
Right. Common plan of development is what you're talking about. We have, in planning, seen pretty much the entirety of the project. We're still going to fine tune it. So you're exactly correct. We don't want to encourage that, nor will we allow that. We're going to look at the entirety of the aspect. It's going to have to be discreet in some regards, but you're going to get the full effect of the project, because we have an idea of what's going to happen there. So we'll bring that information to you.
Mr. Rivera?
Yeah, I do have a small concern also, and that is, I live right beside that light. I live in that area. I've got to go through Rosewood five, six, seven, 10 times a day, so have my wife. And I haven't, I can't remember, including Stan Sluter, where there has been so much accident.
Yeah.
In that light right there. And I believe this belonged more to the street department and everything else with David. But that light going from south to north, that's a four-second light. Two to three vehicles pass through there, that light changed like this. And that's when most of the accident is getting, because people, drivers are trying to pass the light right away while the other, you know, the light, the signal, you need to do something about that light, because I receive at least one complaint a week from one person only, and that's my wife. Every time she called me, she said, hey, there's another accident there, there's another accident there. We need to look into that, city manager. We really need to look into that light, so I can live in peace.
We can put cameras there.
Do something, yeah. I like that.
Mrs. Nash King?
Yeah.
Microphone.
So the question is, what is the staff requiring of the council? At this time, just your due consideration of the future land use map amendment, that's it. At the time that the developers are interested, they will begin a process with the staff, and we will bring zoning cases to you. But right now, it's just like any other future land use map amendment, it's a large-scale amendment. In your packet, we give you factors to consider. If you think that you need more information between tonight and next week's meeting, we just asked that you contact Mr. Olson's office, so he can distribute the information down, and we can provide you with that information. And I would respectfully request that you contact Mr. Olson's office as opposed to planning. That way, I can distribute information to all of you all, if you don't mind.
All right. Mrs. Fleming?
I would like to piggyback on what Mr. Rivera said about the light. Could I, if it's, I'm not out of order. Tom, do you have control of the lights? Does your.
That's.
Control the lights and the timing?
Mr. Olson.
Who controls it?
Mr. Olson.
Mr. Olson, okay.
Sure.
You control the minutes on the lights and everything, so that might come back to you.
It's a little more complicated.
Okay. Mr. Rivera thought I was energized on it to see if they could kind of slow the light down a little bit. He was talking about there's so many accidents. Because the light changes so much, or too quick, is there a reason that we could kind of fix that? Would that help?
I've got a note to take a look at it. We'll take a look at it, but it's a joint intersection with Texas, so it's not just our decision.
Okay.
At the end of the day, it's a multi-party decision, but we will evaluate and correct accordingly.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on. Coming back to our DS items, DS-18-038, city manager updates. We're going to do a council's discussion on priorities and then the protocol introduction. So, Mr. Olson.
Mayor, we're trying to, now that the election's over, and we're trying to look forward over the next several months of working with the budget and moving items as quickly and as properly as we can through the city council. We've been trying to plan out that work and kind of spread some work out over the time we have during council meetings and perhaps special meetings. We have been following this list behind me that the council reviewed and used its priority setting process on, and we've taken care of, substantially taken care of, the top priorities that were identified by the council, I don't know, weeks ago, months ago. And I've. And I've prepared another priority discussion list that we posted next to it. I think you've all had a copy in your packet. That includes, as first priorities, first of all, dealing with the City Council Protocol, the governing standards policy that was previously introduced to the council, then dealing with budget issues, because the budget season is on us and we need to deal with that. There are questions that I need to have answered by the council in order to appropriately put together a balanced budget that deal with, that deal with issues of compensation, retirement, street maintenance, street maintenance fee. We're going to have to talk about the, the airport. We will need to have some conversation about deferred building maintenance. I think these are all priority items that should come to the council as quickly as we can get to them. And then there are a list of other things that I would, I would, I would tend to put at a kind of a secondary priority. If we get them ready to bring forward and can interject them into that conversation, that time for conversation, I think that's great, but these, the, the issues on the top of that list, I think are issues that we must talk about in order to move the budget and our financial issues forward. So I guess I'm looking for a nod, for a nod from the City Council that this order of business is acceptable. If it's not, then I need you to tell me what needs to change so that we're bringing things to you in an order that makes sense to, to the council as well.
And what we're talking about is the list on the left there, and the second part on the bottom is other issues that were brought up with the council in previous discussions. It wasn't a majority, but at least one person minimal brought that up. So if anybody thinks that any of those things need to come up and become a priority, then, you know, this is the place we'll do it. And as far as the protocol, I know that we had a committee, who, I can't remember, who was on the protocol committee? Was it Mr. Rivera? Mr. Harris, I think you were on it, right?
Mr. Johnson was on it.
Mr. Johnson. So I think the protocol, the governing standards that we have is pretty much what was presented on that committee. I don't think, as far as I know, there hasn't been any changes since then, right?
Correct.
So we've all had an opportunity to look at it. The City Manager has designated maybe a couple of council meetings to kind of discuss it and stuff like that, but on feedback from a couple of you guys, I think some of you guys said you guys are okay with everything, so if there's any changes that you think that need to be made, right, Mrs. Fleming?
We'll have ample time to.
Yeah, take it.
Delete and things like that.
Correct.
You said we'll maybe meet next week?
Yeah.
That's awesome, and I like to say that I like this. I went through it, and I looked at it, and I read it, and kind of liked the way it's put together. I think the staff, you have a great job.
And, and that's where I'm getting at. It's like, if you take a look at it and maybe come back next week with any changes or something, maybe we can adopt this, you know, if you guys agree pretty quick in a week or?
I don't know how long we're going to have to.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry.
Mrs. Nash King?
If I understand you correctly, that you say the items that we had already discussed, your team has already, no protocol for working on these items that we?
We are trying to anticipate the discussions with the council, and we have done some base work on, on a number of these. Some of them are ready to bring forward, and it's just a matter of, you know, prioritizing City Council time to have the discussion, really. Protocol's ready, protocol discussion has been ready for many weeks. The budget issues, we've been, staff has been working on the budget issues since probably January. They're not all ready, and they can't be ready until the end of July, but there are, there are issues that we need to bring forward to the City Council and have, have discussions about so that, so that we can exercise our judgment in, in balancing the budget based on input from the council. So there are things there that we need to have conversation about.
I'd like to thank you and your staff for taking the initiative to go ahead and start the basic foundation for us. Thank you.
And, and if I may, I just, you know, we're talking about the budget here, but I know that one of the biggest issues that we have that we're facing is the revenue, because our expenses, as he presented, as part of that budget process there, is, you know, our expenses continue to exceed, and over the long run, they're going to continue to exceed. So this is where I think this, this council is going to have to kind of dig into it and come up with a decision on what we're going to do. It's either we need new revenue, and, and as part of that, I don't know if that's up there as a priority, but I think that we have to identify several sources of revenue that we need to come up with and start that discussion.
Not only with, sir, what they had last year and the budget, taking into consideration the inflation rate, to even add that on top of that.
Yeah. Mr. Harris?
I was going to say, in regards to the, the policies and procedures and everything we're looking at right there, I would say that I can't, you know, I can't get agree that it would go by quickly, because there are some things in here already that some of us didn't like or sort of supported, so those things are going to have to be worked out as well, and I think it's going to take more, probably more than a week to do that, and it's going to have to come with, of course, majority council approval and so forth, and there are some things on there that I'm admittedly against, there are some things on there I'm for. But I think it's probably going to take a little bit longer than, you know, next week or something like that to be done. We can't rush things, we've got to do things right, because once these policies are set, these policies and procedures are set in place, then they're in place. So this is not something to rush. And I was going to say also, in regards to the mentioning of the street fees, I, I know that we, that we're working on forming a capital improvement committee, and I think those belong in there. At the same time, I know we had impact fees up at the front as well, and I just don't like the fact that street fees are being put at the forefront, impact fees are being put behind, and I understand that impact fees are more, I, I guess, more difficult to implement, because street fees, you just pass, pass an ordinance and you go, you go ahead and go along with it, but I still would like to see the impact fees and the street fees come up together, and, because I don't think, as far as the street fees, I think that is a disservice to the citizens that we take on the burden of some stuff without, you know, developers of any sort having to take on any responsibility whatsoever. So citizens, I mean, we, we can't keep bailing out bad decisions, although I know, although I know it's our city, but at the same time, people are coming to the city to make money off the city and off the citizens, and there needs, there needs to be some sharing of that responsibility as well. So even in my opinion, and, you know, even as priority, I think the impact fee should be put back on the, onto the priority list, and if the street fees can be pulled out of the capital improvement committee plan, then so can the impact fees, and we can put that up there again and proceed with that as we've been trying to for so many years. Thank you, sir.
And, and what we can do is kind of go about that, so if, do we have like a consensus to make that, put that up there, like the impact fees? Everybody okay with that? Mr. Johnson, you guys okay? So, Mr. Olson, the impact fees, if they can kind of move those up?
Okay.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes, I just have to add something to what was said. Again, I'm going to repeat myself again. I think we might need, like Mr. Harris says, a little bit more time, simply because Mr. Men King is not here. Mr. Men King is away. We don't know when he's coming back, so he needs ample time to look at this, to study this, because we've already had, had this to look at. He's gone away. So again, out of respect for him, we've got to allow a little bit more time for him to look at this, to digest it, so that he can be a part of whatever time that Mr. Olson says for us to come back. And I say that again, we've got to start this council off doing the right thing. We've got to involve Mr. Men King, respect his leadership as a council member, and allow him, to give him time to read this, and I, you know, suggest that we wait maybe another week or so, maybe two, two or three weeks? How about that? Is that three weeks enough?
Are we talking about what we're trying to do now?
Yes, yes.
Prioritize this, or?
Well, he wanted to meet next week, but like Mr. Harris said, it's too soon. Mr. Olson, when do you think we could meet and give Mr. Men King?
He'll be here next week. He'll be here next week.
You think that'll be ample time for him to read this?
I don't think so.
I don't know what his schedule is, but I'm just trying to make sure that he has the, uh?
No, I say we're having the discussion, so we'll make sure he gets a copy, and then when he comes back next week, because we're still going to have that discussion about that, you know, I don't, yeah, yeah, he's going to have, he's going to be part of the process there.
I think, I think if he, it's, we are scheduled, I believe it's next week, to give him an orientation.
It's Thursday, isn't it? Next Thursday?
Monday.
Monday. See, that's kind of soon. So wherever he's at, he's not going to, the weekend, nobody wants to be reading all the whole week. See what I'm saying? I think we should bring this maybe with him by Friday.
Yeah.
It's only suggesting that.
No, what I'm saying is, we're, we'll discuss it again. We're not going to, we're not looking to vote on it right away, so.
He still needs to read it and digest it like we do, you know?
Good, good.
Just trying to make things right.
Mr. Rivera?
I would just want to say something before I continue to say what I got in mind. I don't need no City Council person to speak on my behalf. Let them speak on their own behalf. I don't think we lost respect for no one. Okay? So speak for yourself.
Again.
Well, either way.
Do we go again?
I, I believe the impact fee should come, but I believe the impact fee should come along with the transportation, impact fee at the same time, because they go both hand to hand. The way I see this, the one that you have for primary has a big impact in the budget. Impact fee don't have a big impact in the budget, because we could prove impact fee today, we probably won't see it sent about a year from now. So it has no impact. But I do believe they need to come along, but I believe they need to come along with the transportation fee and the impact fee at the same time. I think they work hand to hand, because we're talking about almost those fees that need to come up, and they should be hand to hand, far as I'm concerned. But I, I look at this list, the way I see it is, what is going to impact the fiscal year 19? And everything you have up there, it has an impact for fiscal year 19. The rest, I don't see, unless the health insurance and some other thing, they don't have that big impact, Mr. Mayor, for fiscal year 19. And that's what I'm concerned. Get this budget approved with what we need. Impact fee, transportation fee, we need more than time. We're going to need some, couple of workshop, and I'm glad to hear some of the City Council members saying that they need a lo, long time to look into this. I hope they understand they need to come to the workshop.
And, and since we're talking about street fees and stuff, the other thing that I would recommend, and again, up to you guys, but because of that bond election that just happened, we had put that in there for the street, for KISD bond, where we weren't sure whether that's going to pass or not, and it did pass, so that's probably another thing that probably needs to move up there, because that's going to come at us fast, and we're going to have to work out, not just with us, with the county, with the school, everybody that's going to be part of that. So that's probably another thing that I would recommend move up, so. Mr. Johnson?
Just very quickly, protocol, we already halfway there. I think that needs to remain on priority, then we can get that knocked out. We spent a lot of time on that as an ad hoc committee. Two, economic development, I haven't seen too much come back. We had a discussion about it, but I asked for economic, economic development strategic plan, and when it comes to street fees, I'm just not for taxing citizens more. A taxing of fees, the same thing to me, it's coming out the same book. I think we need to get that worked out. Revenue holes, I won't go for a street fee until we get these revenue holes figured out, and one big revenue hole is property tax exemptions. We have a legislative session that's coming up. I know it's after the budget season, but that is a large chunk of money that we need, and that is something that, that elephant is not going to go away. Challenging a street fee to try to fill these holes, that, that gap is going to continue to increase and increase, so I think a, a narrow strategic plan on the upcoming legislative session where the lobbies need to happen soon, if not after the budget season.
All right. Mr. Kilpatrick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I'm in overall agreement. I don't mind talking about, or bringing impact fees up for discussion. It probably should be at the bottom of any of our discussions for this priority discussion list, if that, because one, it can only do new streets. There's no way it can help us with the capital improvement streets and, by law. So it can't fix our streets. It can't fix water crests. It can't fix stagecoats. It can't fix anything. And we can't, we're not going to get any monies out of them for 18 to 20 months by law. So I have no objection to discussing them, but I, I think it needs to be at the bottom of our priority discussion, move it out of other whatsoever. I, I do believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. City Manager, didn't, am I mistaken, that we're really looking at the 19 budget, but looking at the 20 budget also into it, its impact on the 20 budget?
Yes, actually, we're, we're actually looking out through 20, 23.
Right. So therefore I do agree wholeheartedly, the streets for KISD bond need to be brought up into that discussion when we talk about the 19 budget and its impact on other budgets, because it's going to come up on us quicker than what we really think. And I believe our discussions earlier, we talked about, the, the design is going to be a whole lot quicker than 22, 23 for them. We're probably going to have to look at design work in 20, no, later in 21, if they're looking at a 22 start date for that high school and elementary school. And I, I do agree that everything we need to look at now, and agree that the City Manager has proposed to us, is our priority discussions must impact that budgetary issues for, for the, what the City Manager is going to propose to us, the 19, 20, impact to 21, out to that. And those should be our priority discussion issues. The others will come to us as they come in into fruition. You know, we, we can look at develop owner management policy. If that comes to be an issue, then it'll come to hot, hot, issue will come to us. But, I, I, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Mrs. Nash King, speaking to the microphone.
Yes, sir.
Can't hear you.
As we move forward, my concern is that if we're going to talk about the KISD bond, I don't, we, and in the budget, we also can put out any street maintenance, if we're going to do a bond, this is just a recommendation, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Mayor and City Council, we can combine all of that together as to open up more revenue from our general fund. So if we're going to do a bond, if we go that direction as a council recommendation, any street big projects that we know we must work on, we can combine that together with the bond, because regardless of what we say, Mr. Olson stated a couple of months ago, he gave us from 2018 going out project, I think, 23, 24, and we're going to get more and more and more in debt if we don't have any revenue. Where is that revenue going to come from?
Yeah.
We can do a budget, but we have to have revenue regardless of what. So we had our meeting with him, he gave us three options, and this is just recently, and those are some things that the budget, the bond, and any major street project, that has to go together.
Yeah, so right now, what we're trying to do is just prioritize it.
The priorities, they have to go together.
And I think that.
They have to go together, okay.
They, 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 yeah, we just want to prioritize, we don't have to go into the discussion of them, but you got the budget.
The KISD bond.
The KISD bond.
Any major street project.
And any major street project, which are there, so I think we got them. And so we added to that list, what was it that we added? We added impact fees, right?
Impact fees, yeah.
We added, was everybody okay with the school bond, the KISD and all that, bringing, you know, that discussion in there? And that was it, right?
Well, I'm against.
Hold on.
I mean, there, Mr. Mayor. I didn't vote for, excuse me, not voted.
No, I was just getting a consensus.
Because I don't, I didn't give, I didn't give.
Yeah, no. Okay, understood. Not everybody voted, but we think we had a consensus here. Mr. Johnson?
I was wanting to.
I was wanting to add, add it for a strategic plan for the upcoming legislative session.
Strategic plan?
There's a revenue gap.
Now, that's something that we can ask, I don't think, we can probably get them to come out and do another presentation or something, but that's just... What's that? Yeah, they, they come out and do that.
The council does control, we pay, the taxpayers pay that firm $100,000 per year, they're on a five-year contract. We need a narrow plan to figure out how are we going to fill that revenue gap? We continue to lose millions per year on property tax exemption, what are we going to do about it?
I got it. I'm saying that they, they can do to present, you know, is it a discussion item we have discussed, are you trying to say we need to discuss them bringing it, or I'm trying to clarify?
The city needs to have a plan on how are we going to attack this issue when a session comes up. What are we going to do? That's an important factor. Just trying to slap street fees on someone, taxpayers that's been paying into the system all these years, it's not going to solve that issue. That gap with property tax exemption continues to grow every year, and we can't keep turning a blind eye to it, we need to address it once for all. We pay this firm, again, $100,000 per year, to do what? We need one or two items.
I got it.
A clear direction for this firm.
What I'm trying to get, you know, I understand, you know, all that, but what, what are you recommending? What is, what is the recommendation as far as the priorities here? What is it that you...
I'm fine with bringing it all the way down past the protocol, economic development, and the KISD streets and the bond, I'm fine with that, at least after we adopt the budget.
So, you're okay with that, so we're good.
Yes, but it still needs to be put on the chart. After the budget, that's something that we need to start working on, because they go into session in January.
So, you're...
The council needs to be ready for it.
So, you're saying for us to have a session about priorities?
Our plan on how are we going to address that issue, that revenue gap.
Revenue gap.
What are our legislative priorities for the upcoming legislative session?
And that's fine, that's good. And, and, and that's a good one, but keep in mind that as much as we want them, you know, we want them to be supportive, we can't, we still got to take action here, you know, because you can't hold your breath and just hope that something's going to happen, because those are the tough decisions I talk about, you know? We have to be able to say, you know what, we're going to have to make a decision, not push it and hope and wish something happens in this legislature. We give them $1 million, I don't care, it doesn't change it, it's, it's, it's something that we have to do here, other than hope that something's going to happen, because I think that everybody's here is smart enough to understand how that process works. Legislation, you know, in the state of Texas, there's no guarantees that something is going to happen, there's so many people down there vying for a lot of different things, just like a business, just like a newspaper ad, you run an ad, you spend a lot of money, and you hope you're going to win an election, ain't go guaranteed, and so that's just hoping, you know, and so we got to make a decision to say, you know what, we need to do those tough decisions, not push it up on the legislature, just so we don't have to make those tough decisions, so.
Tough decision, those are partly funded and unfunded mandates. As long as this firm is getting the check by the taxpayer, they work for us, and it doesn't matter if a bill passes or not, and we still need to have a plan on telling that lobby firm what we want them to do.
And you're right, I understand that.
So, it's not about hope, it's about what our priorities are.
You can guarantee that...
I'm not going to guarantee that a bill passes, but we need to let this lobby firm know what we want them to concentrate on for the upcoming session, that's all I'm asking. That needs to go on the chart over there.
I understand that. Okay, put it on there, let's, everybody okay with that? Put it on there. Yeah. But, Mr. Harris?
Okay, I'll say, let's see, in regards, regards to the KISD bond and us, you know, floating a bond for infrastructure, actually, that would be like down lower on the list for me, simply because I've, I've driven around purposely, and I've looked at schools, I've looked at the infrastructure around them, and the infrastructure that's around them is not consistent with what we want to put out there right now, as far as the, you know, like I said, the general infrastructure. When you go out there by Patterson, that little county road right there is just dangerous for people coming out, so, infrastructure on that particular part, I think, can wait a little bit until we, even as Greg said, start talking about some revenue and things like that, because we float $30 million bond, that's going to really put us down and in, but at the same time, everybody knows that the mask is, the mask is infrastructure for the school, but the face behind the mask is the mud, and both of those things do exist. So, in the school building where it is, and like I said, that's the mask, the mud can be the face if you want to put it that way, but either way, we need to enter into this thing very, very carefully.
So, what was...
So, but, that's what I'm saying, but I would say, drop that down, but the other thing I want to put on there, actually, is establishing regular meetings with KDC as stated by their policy, because they have not been following their policy for years, so I think that needs to, we need to hold them to that policy and come back online with that, or, you know, I was going to say, if they can't follow their policy, then, you know, and come back and update us like they need to, as their policy stays, then we can fire them, I guess, or something. But, um, but as far as it goes, that needs to be a priority in establishing those regular meetings as stated by their policies, as we discussed some time ago, for them to come in and update us and brief us, whether it be in private, or whether it be in private, or whether it be publicly, but we need to make sure that we get back on track with that, because it's been absent for so many years, and that's very, very important.
All right. What do we got?
Well, I, what do we have? I, I think what I need to do is take the input that I've heard and noted and redo the, redo the page, and I'll hang it back up, and we can look at it, we can look at it next week and argue about it some more.
There you go. It's, uh, take some action on some of the, like, like I say, I think that it, we're going to have, as a council, some tough decisions to make, and I think that all these stuff that you guys brought are good stuff, it's, it's not that we don't want to say, no, this is not good stuff, but I think that, you know, there's some tough challenges that are coming, and if we don't start planning, I think that's what's happened in the past, you know, sometimes as council members, we don't want to make those tough decisions, and so we just move it forward or do other things that are really, they're important, but not as important as what's happening at that moment, and then we don't want to make those tough decisions, we want somebody else to do that for it, which is okay, you know, as politics, you know, we want somebody else to come in and say, here, I'm going to save your city. Right now, when I go to infrastructure meetings, and they have these new way that they're going to provide some type of funding for citizens, they want the cities to show some type of new funding source in order for them to get it, because they want the cities to commit, because no city wants to commit. The cities want the state or the federal government to come in and give them the money they need, so people don't vote us out of office, and that's not how they work, they're saying, you know what, if you want this money, you're going to have to do something, and they're talking about a new funding source for your city, it's not just free money, and so we need to look at that stuff and make those tough choices. So, you can't cut so much. Cutting is great, because it doesn't make us lose elections, you know, it's like cut, we don't raise fees or anything like that. But we need to cut as much as we can, but there's, comes a point where that's it, you can't do that no more, so. Mrs. Fleming?
I asked Mr. Olson to clarify everything we were saying, what day do we meet next week to discuss this, like you suggested?
I think, I think the way it'll work is, we'll have a, we'll suggest a special meeting after the business meeting, a special workshop. So, it'll be Tuesday, yeah. And let me add something to what you were saying, Mayor. I, I know the council looks at this list, I, I think everybody would agree that everything on this list is an important thing to talk about. I don't see the council trying to evade the discussion on these items at all. The, the question comes back, because, because we have limited time and we have limited resources, every one of these items takes some preparation, it takes preparation on the part of the staff, and it takes preparation on the part of the council to have a meaningful discussion. So, because, because it takes time and it takes resources, because we have other things happening that have timelines on them, we just need to decide which one are we going to talk about first, and then which one are we going to talk about second? So, that, that's the only issue. I, I can, we can do anything the council wants to do, but we can't do everything the council wants to do all at once. So, I'm just trying to figure out which one comes first, and I'm assuming protocol comes first.
I think everybody's okay with the protocol, knock that out of the way, I think that's good.
That'll be next, that'll be next week.
We'll have the discussion start next week.
And then I think maybe I'll just ask you which one you want to talk about next, after that.
All right. Anything else?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I got something to say.
Mr. Rivera?
It is incredible, the amount of time this city manager and his staff to put in to get a good fiscal year and a budget, and we throw a bunch of things in his lap, that's all we do, is just act and throw things in the people's lap, okay? And then we go home, and these people stay behind working, instead of seeing what we have in hand to get a good budget. A lot of the things that I hear today, it makes sense, but that should wait after we get with the budget, and no, we don't need a meeting on Tuesday, we need a meeting from Monday to Friday, with all the things that you throw in our lap, okay? That's who we are. Mr. City Manager, I applaud for what you do, I feel sorry who you're dealing with.
We have a good city manager, he can handle it. Mr. Harris?
I'll just say this one thing, you know, in, in my basic opinion, I think, I think a lot of this could simply be avoided by, you know, even as the city manager determines what's the priority to bring forward, we can go with that, but at the same time, I still think that one quick easy way to handle some of this stuff would just be to, aside from what he brings forth as priorities, then we just take stuff as they come in and are submitted, and that would be a whole lot easier, because when you, like I said, when you keep shuffling stuff around, then stuff can get dropped to the bottom, and even though the idea of the system, of the prioritizing is good, the thing is that council members still have their own, either by, by strict belief and conviction, they have their personal thing that they want to address, or by whatever else thing, whatever, personal interest of some sort, whatever, that they don't want addressed. Okay, so, honestly, in my opinion, city manager, prioritize, and beyond what he prioritizes as being necessary, then after that, everything council members submit, and the things that come in, we take them as they come in and just, and just knock them out, and that, that will knock out all this craziness, all this arguing.
Mr. Harris has probably the smartest thing I've ever seen, I mean, that, that is awesome. If all the council would agree to that, I'm all for that, let the city manager decide, bring it forward, because he's got 35 years' experience. He knows what he's doing. It's just that we can't go back and say, when he does something like that, and say, why didn't you give the opportunity to the council, because he got that from us? But, you know, I am 150% supportive of what you just said right now.
Me too, because, I mean, like I said, otherwise, you know, if, if he brings protocol up, but at the same time, we still have the other things that came up, you know, in order, then those things would be knocked out, a lot of those stuff on the list right there would be gone already if we just...
That would be good, I would, you know, we trust, we hire a great city manager, we trust him to do a great job, which he's done, and he's proven himself, and yet, you know, he's got to sit here and hear all this back and forth, but I'm for you, I mean, Mr. City Manager, are we in, let's do consensus on that, let the city manager prioritize it and bring it to us, how's that, everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Mr. City Manager.
But we, but we always include things, we always include some of the other stuff as well.
All right, I love it, we got it. All right, with that, I think you got it, Mr. City Manager, giving you authority to come in and prioritize it and bring it forward, and we got this in recording, if they come in and say, we're going to say, Mr. Harris, this was your call right here. So, with that motion adjourned, second by Mrs. Fleming, I mean Nash King, I'm sorry.